I've turned it on to automatically record.
Okay, great.
We're watching it's almost backed up. Three or four miles.
Had to call animal control this morning, Alias Hillsborough P D. Had a feral cat.
Yeah, okay, yeah, Rebecca mentioned.
Yeah, apparently got hit because his back leg was not, not working and he looked pretty rough, so. Called Chief Dan and he sent whoever was on duty to take care of it.
Well, I think David Funk was at the coffee shop too, jumped in there and helped. Direct went to get coffee.
Had to do that a few times. Really hated it with dogs. It's back legs broke.
Yeah, this one, he looked like he'd been in a few wars. You know, in his nine lives, kind of ran out. Yeah, he was on the last one. Okay, I've got four o'clock and we've got a quorum, so. We will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsboro to order. We will start with agenda item B, which is approval of minutes from our seven twenty-one, twenty-one special meeting. That was a special meeting, wasn't it?
It was.
So, did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Any questions, corrections to the minutes?
Um, I don't think I was there. It says in the first one. That I was there, so.
Strike you.
Strike you from your own.
There. Okay.
So other than that, I don't know anything.
All right. So with that correction that Councilman Lowen was not present. And I believe Councilman Driggers was present via Zoom, so. Uh, with that correction, would anybody care to make a motion? Councilman McCarty? Moves, is there a second? Councilman Garing seconds? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to approval of vouchers. Uh, today we have vouchers totaling one hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, seventy-nine cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now move on to agenda item D, public comments, Mr. Styles.
Uh, so if anyone has a public comment that's on Zoom, you can raise your hand and let us know and we'll unmute you or you can unmute and we can have that conversation. I don't think anybody's there from the public think. Or two attendees other than Danielle or from the, from the record, um, so. Don't have anything, I don't know.
Okay. And you said Darren was going to.
Yeah, he's, he, he told me to put him on the agenda, so he may be coming in a little bit later.
All right, we'll just come back to him when he gets here. Uh, so we'll move into our, to our business section and we will skip over item one. Uh, to allow Darren to speak to that and we will go to item two, which is resolution twenty-two-one dash oh five. Intention to exceed revenue neutral rate, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is related to the budget, uh, the twenty-two budget. Um, so what it's been, what we have to do in order to, to hold the revenue neutral hearing, which we're, we have scheduled for the seventh of September is to pass this resolution, which goes on to the county clerk. Uh, she's already been notified about our intent, we've been having discussions with her, uh, with her about that. And so we've, it's been kind of a, an interesting process because this law changed right in the, right in the middle and so. We've kind of had to figure it out as we've gone, but this is the next, the piece that needs to happen with it. So what it just says is that we're, we are planning on, uh, exceeding the revenue neutral rate. It's just as we discussed at the budget, when we looked at it originally, uh, forty-two point four-three-seven mils. The county's calculated a revenue neutral rate of forty point eight-eight-six. And so in order to exceed that, we have to pass this resolution and then pass the budget and hold the hearing, so. Uh, this is just kind of the, the next piece of that puzzle and a notification step.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash oh five. Intention to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Councilman McCarty moves, Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Garing? Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Okay. That resolution is adopted. Three, zero. So we'll now move on to agenda item, new agenda item three, I should say, which is a proposal to replace the HVAC system at the library. At Fleming, using Flemings at a cost of sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've got two HVAC units that service that half of the building, primarily the library. We call them the library units because that's the vast majority of it. So we've had Fleming out here three separate times already this summer and they came out a fourth time and they said, well, we can't, we can't do anything for you. And they're pretty much on live support. The original of the buildings, they've gone forty-five years, which is, you know, more than you'd expect from an HVAC unit. So it, they're, they're kind of an unusual, this building is a little bit unusual and that the, they have floor duct work, um, so they're kind of down, what do they call them, down? Downflow A C furnace.
Keep the cool close to the ground.
Yeah, keeps it close to the ground, uh, they're, they're buried in the floor, so if we ever have an issue with the fence, we're gonna have to tear up the floor to fix them. Seems like a design issue to me, but it is what it is, so they've run for forty-five years, no issues. So, uh, you know, they finally said, we've had them out, it's been pretty, pretty hot and pretty stuffy in the, uh, the library and so they've had some issues, we had them out and they said, there's not much we can do with this, so. Uh, one of the things we're, we're lucky because they are a little bit unusual and they're, they're three phase, because we have three phases to this building, is that we can actually get these air conditioning units. Uh, right now, you can't really get in a residential unit that back ordered, seen a lot of people with that, so. Um, these are actually are available and we can get them, uh, next week if we want to, uh, if we, if the council chooses to replace those. Uh, it's not really a planned expenditure, but, uh, it's in the C I P fund, we can take it out of there, so. Um, our sales tax dollars move into there once they fund everything else that in there, so. Having a higher sales taxes is one of those things we can spend, uh, that money on to replace the HVAC of the library, so. Uh, we're recommending the approval to, to move forward as replacing that, I don't, you know, it's one of those things, I, I think they've lived a good life, but. Uh, it's, it's time to get them replaced.
Questions?
Sounds like they have exceeded their limit.
Forty-five years is a pretty good run.
Forty-five years for air conditioning units, amazing.
Now, Bill Lawn here, he used to be a parking lot, so I can imagine. I was here when I built.
Oh.
I worked for the city, they did all this stuff.
So. Would it be helpful at all to explain that, you know, this, why the funds come from the city as opposed to from the library?
Yeah, so the, it's the city's building, uh, in this case, since the library, uh, they don't actually own their space, the city does. They are two separate entities, we have the library board and they're governed by that board, uh, and we levy taxes on their behalf, but they do exist independently. Um, and they do receive funding for the state, state grant cycle that matches libraries, but. Uh, that's primarily just for operational things, it's not for any capital thing, so. Part of the agreements that we have with them is that we basically have the building and maintain it for them. So that's kind of how that relates.
So it's our building.
Yep.
I just wanted to make that clear for anybody that might be thinking that, that that should come out of the libraries.
Right.
Funding, but, uh. They, they would not be in a good spot to be able to handle that, I can tell you.
Do not believe they would have.
No, they're responsible.
Been on the library before.
Yeah.
Oh, I can tell you the one thing I did learn when I became mayor was that the mayor is, is always on the library board. It's just that, that wouldn't a choice.
In the code, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's codified and so, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty in tune with their financial situation. So, so anyway, anyway, so any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve replacing the HVAC systems at the library. Uh, using a bid from Flemings at a cost of sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves, is there a second? Councilman Garing seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the purchase is approved. So let's go ahead and get that on order.
Get them going.
Uh, next item up. We've been, uh, awaiting for this for some time now, but, uh, it has arrived. Item four is the Kansas Water Office Purchase Agreement. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is, uh, yeah, as we, as you said, Mr. Mayor, it's something we've been kind of talking about for a little while. Uh, we, we had permission, we got permission to negotiate, um, with, with Kansas Water Office. Uh, that's, that has to go through a process even to get to that point, but it's really, it's not really a negotiation. Um, because they have the ability and control of the water supply, so they, they pretty well set the rate, you can kind of sign on or sign off. Uh, and given that we don't really have a viable second option. We're kind of stuck with what, what we're offered, so. What they do is, uh, they have a forty-year contracts and so our current forty-year contract is coming to an end in December. And so this would be, take its place and pick up for another forty years, so it would be December of twenty-one until, uh, December of sixty-one. When I will, I and all of us will be long gone from here, but we will have, you know, still have water, uh, coming in from the reservoir. Uh, so the big difference here is, is the cost, uh, the current contract, it wasn't necessarily fixed, uh, for the forty years, they had the ability to make changes of it every ten years. Uh, but we currently only pay ten cents for every thousand gallons we take out of there, which is well below what the rate is that they charge for everybody else. Uh, in, in taking out of, of reservoirs across the state, so they, K W O. Manages the reservoirs across the state and they are only concerned with the actual volume of the water in those. Uh, they don't have any jurisdiction or any ability to talk about the quality of the water, which is what we have a biggest, biggest issue with. Water is complicated in Kansas and there's lots of different jurisdictions that take. Different pieces of the puzzle when it comes to water, but no one really takes ownership of the quality. Ultimately, it probably comes down to K D H E in the state, but, uh, they're not really stepping forward to say that this is, this is an issue that we. Uh, need to deal with, so when we talk about maybe we have a negotiation position because of all the blue green algae and the costs of treated. K W A to, or K W O doesn't really have any jurisdiction to make any changes based on that, so. Their prices are figured on what the, uh, essentially what the debt service is to maintain the reservoir system across the state. So they kind of take those and mix all the costs together, uh, they have to participate with whatever the Corps of Engineers has them do. And so, uh, Marion County Reservoir is actually one of the highest cost, uh, reservoirs in the state, just because some of the, the issues with it. Uh, and the, and the volume, when you spread it out, it's one of the highest costs to operate, but we get the benefit of, of spreading that cost across all the other reservoirs of the state, so. Uh, how they figure that rate is based on that and, uh, you know, what it costs to them to maintain a staff and to also pay the debt service and participate in any projects that prove reservoir, so. Uh, right now, you know, right now we're paying ten cents per thousand gallons, but the proposed contract brings us in at, uh, point forty-five and a half cents roughly per thousand gallons, so it's a pretty significant jump in cost. And what the, the representative from K W O said was that, that, you know. This new contract can change yearly, they, they notify you by the middle half of the year of what the rate's gonna be. Uh, and approximately three percent of years, kind of where it's been going. So it's continues to go up, so what we've seen, you know, live in the days of fixed rate for almost forty years is, is over. Uh, it moves up every year basically from there on. Um, so if, you know, just projecting that out, looking at how that looks, you know, at the end of the forty-year contract, it would be somewhere around a dollar and a half per thousand gallons, if it continued to go up at that rate and was consistent. There's no guarantee of that, obviously it could change at any time. So that's, you know, this is the future of what we're talking about, so the city of Hillsborough is gonna be paying a lot more for the raw water costs from this point into the future, so. Uh, and, you know, like I said, there's really not any issue we can do with negotiating it, um, per se, based on quality, where, what the decision we really need to make is, how much do we want to ask for? Um, for the last forty years, we've had three hundred million gallon kind of cap on what we had to do. Uh, we don't come anywhere near three hundred million gallons, uh, a year, right now we're using about a hundred and thirty million gallons. And how that's situated is that we have to pay for half of that usage, whatever our allocation is. At one time during the year and then now we have to pay a kind of a carrying cost for the remainder of that usage, so. You know, we would pay, you know, under those terms, we would pay for a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty million gallons and then we'd also pay the carrying cost for that second hundred and fifty million gallons until we used it, if we got into it. It's a little bit confusing, but, you know, basically right now we pay for that hundred and fifty million gallons and that's, that doesn't change, that's how we do it now, we pay for a hundred and fifty million gallons at the beginning of the year. We only have used basically a hundred and thirty million gallons, um. And so when it was ten cents per thousand, that's a lot cheaper than it is potentially going now, so. What we have to do is, do we really need the three hundred million gallons? And that's a really difficult decision, you're sitting here thinking about forty years from now, what, what are we gonna need? Um, so what I did was gonna, I did a little bit of. Uh, projections on those, um, took into effect, you know, what it would look like if we were gonna have commercial and, and population growth, you know. The, the standard for when you estimate these things is that each person uses about a thousand gallons a day, um, so I looked at. What that would look like if we had population growth. Uh, using our actual data from nineteen ninety to the present and then I looked at what the strategic plan has, which is half a percent growth. And then a one percent growth is kind of a high growth scenario and kind of compared those things. Uh, and then I added one percent in for natural growth of commercial industrial use and overall general use, so. You know, in that scenario, we're likely to hit about two hundred and fifty million gallons annually in the high growth scenario. Two hundred and twenty-six million in the, uh, average. Either case, we really, we're not near the three hundred million, um. So if you really wanted to, you probably could reduce the amount, uh. Of water that you could, you could be asking for in this allocation. Uh, you could probably get by with two hundred and fifty and it would be fine, that would reduce your overall costs, uh, because you are gonna pay for half of that whether you use it or not. Then the question comes up, well, what if we get in a situation where we actually experience a lot of more growth or we bring in another industry? We've had, we've had, we've responded to a couple of R F Ps from the state that, uh, you know, for like food processing industries, maybe not high employment things, but high water usage. People that could use a hundred and fifty million gallons themselves in a year, so. It wouldn't be necessarily out of the question, if you, if you landed one of those, then you would be obviously using a lot more, so.
I have another question.
Yeah.
This. Is obviously four and a half times as much. Cost per gallon. Uh, for raw water, but. How much does that really raise it as far as cost, once you add all the, all the things that we do to the water, which is probably costs a whole lot more than this raw water.
Right, yeah, so it goes from basically fifteen thousand a year to sixty-eight thousand a year, which. You know, it would represent about seven percent of the total budget we spent. And we, right now to treat a thousand gallons of water, we have it figured out at about a dollar ninety-five.
I just think it's important for the tax, or the person who's paying for water to realize that this is not four and a half times about it.
Right.
They have to pay for their water.
Right.
This is the raw water that comes.
Yeah, so this.
The other cost still involved in getting them good water to drink is, is, are a lot higher.
Yeah.
This is just a small part of that.
Correct.
So, yeah, helpful to know.
So it would add about, um, thirty-five cents to a dollar ninety-five, which is what we have now.
That's a dollar ninety-five per thousand gallons.
Gallons. So that's just adding the raw water cost on there. So that doesn't include any other.
Any other add.
Add-ons, right?
Yeah, might increase.
It might increase, yeah, because of.
Could increase.
The.
Affect it more than that.
Yeah, the, the thing that's probably gonna affect it more is the, the quality issues that we've had, because the last, you know, nine weeks, we're in nine weeks now dealing with blue green algae and iron and manganese, which are byproducts of the blue green algae. And that nearly doubles our cost to treat the water. So it's gone from, you know, during that period, it's been three dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand gallons.
So what we're saying here is this is a concern, but it is not. The main concern with water right now, right?
Absolutely true. Yeah, the main concern is this iron and manganese and blue green algae. Because that's costing us and we'll talk about having to buy more chemicals here in a minute, but. So, yeah, thinking about the, the water contract, there's really no, no room to negotiate the price, we're, we're rad as the planet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a matter of how much we want to purchase.
Yeah.
And that's set for how many years, forty?
Forty years, yeah.
Oh my goodness.
I have a question, if some other entity besides a business or organic growth. Wanted us to provide water, treated water to them, would that come out of our, our allegation, our allocation? Or would it potentially come out of an existing allocation?
So, yeah.
Somewhere else.
Great example would be the C P body, they have a contract with, uh, the K W O two. Uh, and theirs is due, it comes up for renewal next year, so they're gonna be saying, well, we are next year. Uh, but anything that they, anything we treat for them comes out of their allocation and not ours.
Okay.
So if.
Okay, so if Marion jumped on board.
Marion or, yeah, yeah. If somebody else jumped on board and they had an existing contract, it would come from theirs and not from ours.
Okay.
But if we brought on, I don't know, who would be, say the city of Durham or something like that wanted to purchase from us. Uh, and they didn't have a contract, then it would come from that three hundred million, you know. What K W A said is that, you know, right now, we're in a good position because Marion Reservoir has one of the highest capacities in the state. And so if you needed more contract, you could actually ask for a second contract with them for the additional now, presuming they have it thirty years from now.
Water, water is, uh. is an issue. And I, and I mean, it may not be an issue of dire consequence right now. At some point, you know, as the offer continues to be depleted, you know, in Western Kansas, the underground water supplies and, you know, ag irrigation and things and the effect that that has. I think I would have a hard time sitting here recommending that we reduce
Reduce our allocation.
Our allocation. I just think that's a real short sighted move when we're thinking about something that's forty years down the road. And, you know, we're committing our grandchildren to. So. I would, I would tend to, to, to recommend that we move conservatively and not not make any risky decisions. That's just my personal opinion.
That, that's my recommendation too. I think as water scarcity becomes an issue. One of the things that they, they shared with us was that the John Redmond Reservoir, which has had a lot of documented issues, they've had to dredge it several times. That's the reservoir that feeds Wolf Creek Nuclear Plant. And they are running out of capacity in, in John Redmond. So they're looking for other avenues, which one of them is Marion Reservoir. So, you know, if they start taking out of that, then our capacity issue can come, come into play. So. I think it would be be wise of us to stake our claim on the three hundred million and keep that regardless. I mean, it will cost us more, obviously, but.
The, there are at least three of us sitting around this table that remember the water, the way it was before we connected to the reservoir. And the quality of our water was poor, to say the least. And it also had a negative impact on the development. And there are people that will tell you that the Pfizer operations in McPherson had a chance to come here, but the water supply was not adequate for that operation and it went to McPherson instead. So. Not to I used to refer to it as liquid lime, but I mean, the cost, you know, just to operate and, and, you know, the, the, the calcium buildup and things that we had to deal with in the water distribution system were a mess as well. So, you know, we don't want to go back there.
That's the best.
Just have all kinds of
It smells really bad.
Yeah. You know, we used to
Outlaw water fights could relieve those waters.
Yeah.
It was pretty hard on that.
Well, if you, if you, if you see anybody around town that actually uses well water to irrigate, you'll see if it sprays up on their house, you, you'll know it, you can see it. So it leaves a mark. Any other questions or comments regarding, regarding this water agreement? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion that we, that we other, that we approve the Kansas Water Office Purchase Agreement.
Well, okay, sorry.
But, but, but we, then we, the, okay.
Yes. We can't, we can't take any action. Yeah, we can't approve it right now. What we have to do is determine what we're going to make the allocation.
Okay. So, all right. Then, so then I'd accept a, a motion that we proceed forward with the Kansas Water Office pursuing a three hundred million gallon capacity.
Right, a motion.
Okay. Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to agenda item five, Elcon invoices. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we just have the one today for four hundred and seventy eight dollars and ten cents. This is at the water plant. They were doing some work with the blowers. And so we had to have that amount and help with some of that. Where we had a lot of materials, but also some labor involved with that too.
Okay. Any questions regarding the Elcon invoice for four hundred and seventy eight dollars, ten cents? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve that invoice for payment.
Awesome move.
Councilman Lowen moves.
Second.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those abstaining. All those opposed, motion carries. Elcon invoice approved. We now have our additional item six, which is the carbon purchase for the water department. Mr. Styles.
Sir. So the water department came today with the request to purchase some more hydro, hydro, hydro Draco carbon. It's what we use in the, it's what we use in the water treatment plant to, it kills chemical or kills odors and also helps purify the water a little bit. So. We normally buy this once a year. It's a little earlier in the year because of the last nine weeks, which we discussed before with treating all the blue green algae, iron and manganese that's coming through from the reservoir. So this is part of that. So we've kind of gone through our supply a little ahead of time, more quickly than we thought we were, about twice as fast. And then we normally would in those last two months. So. We're in need of putting this order in. It's one of those things that we have to get the order in fairly quickly because it's becoming one of those things we can't get as quickly as we normally have. And that's due to supply chain things like we've seen with some other things. So. They brought this to me today. They're requesting twenty bags. They're nine hundred pound bags. It's possible the shipping company will come back and say, you know, to get a full order, you need twenty four. And so I'm just recommending we go for the twenty four and, and remove that possibility. So we will definitely use it as a product that we use, doesn't have a ship, well, it has a shelf life, but it's long enough that it's not going to be an issue by the time we use it. So. We do have the storage capacity for it as well. We did one of these purchases last, I think, end of last September last year. So. It's, it's pretty standard purchase. It's one of those things that we use all pretty frequently in the process. So asking for approval to purchase it at not to exceed costs of thirty thousand, twenty four dollars. And I've got on the backside of that, the actual purchase order, if you're interested in what that looks like.
These are not carbon offsets. This is real carbon.
This is actual powdered carbon. Yes.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the purchase of carbon for water production from Harcross Chemicals at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand, twenty four dollars. Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, purchase is approved. I don't know if you want to reach out to Darren to see if he's actually planning to be here.
Text him real quick.
We'll just I will move on to board appointments if that's okay while you're doing that. I do have one appointment today and that's a reappointment of Leroy Just to the museum board. He filled an, an expired term and so he had a short, just a short term and then that turns out that was expired and I didn't realize it. So. He came by my office today. Wanted to know if he was still on the museum board. So I said, I will look into that, make sure. So when I looked into it, that's what I found. So I'd like to present Leroy Just for a full term on our museum board. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Garing seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Just is appointed to a full term on the museum board. And I don't know if you want to go ahead and give your report while we're
Sure can. Okay. So board zoning appeals met last week. The B Z A doesn't meet all that often, but we had two cases are related to fencing issues, which there's a narrow part of the code that the B Z A handles for fencing. One of them was from the building center and then they had a house over here on Washington Street, two eighteen. Both requests had setback issues. So what that meant was that the, they were wanting to put fences where the setback requirements in that zone said that that was a front yard. In both cases, these buildings were on corner lots. And so they had basically two front yards. There's really they're honestly, they're a little bit goofy. They were a little bit ridiculous. And, and while the one in the house was, I think particularly strange because it was an existing fence that had been there for thirty years. But because the code had changed in two thousand and eleven, it made that fence illegal to put back. And so we're working in the, the both of, both of them passed, both got variances, but we are working on addressing some of these issues with the code to prevent these things from happening in the future. Cause it is kind of a hassle for people. Especially if they're putting a fence back. It just doesn't, doesn't pass the common sense test in a lot of different ways. So. With the board zoning appeals did their, did, went through and, and did everything. We had public hearings. And so everything moved forward on those. Both of that approved. So. No need to worry about those actions, but we're going to try to help fix that for future actions to kind of avoid hassling people with those. League of Municipalities Conference, if you're interested in going, it is a great conference. They are going to be back in person this year, Topeka. August, October ninth through eleven. If you want to register to let me know as soon as you can, I'm going to have to cut it off before our next, or at our next meeting. So if you're interested in, you know, why that. Public Power Week, we also have Public Power Week again, coming up this year. It's October three through nine and K P P is buying everyone shirts again. This year they're like a baseball shirt. So it's a quarter length sleeve with blue with the Public Power logo on it. So if you're interested in one of those, I've got a signup sheet. I can bring that in after we get done. I can sign up for one of those. The caveat with taking the shirt is that you are required to be in a picture. So if you don't want to get your picture taken and end up on our Facebook page, don't take sure. That's the caveat. Fiber project and moving forward with that, hopefully getting that wrapped up here in the first part of August. I think they're getting close to being finished with the boards, but I know the splicing isn't quite finished just yet. Here's Community Plaza Project, we are finalizing all the, the features. I'm going to get the order sent in this week to finish that out. And then we'll have about six weeks to get it delivered. And there's an installation crew getting lined up on that too. We're talking with another person about bathrooms. We were talking, the architect design, designed to have shipping containers. They don't really have a ton of experience with that. So we're having some issues trying to work through that. So we may end up with more of a traditional block construction on the bathrooms, but that, we're going to work through that. I try to get some good options on that for you guys to look at. So. Service awards, we're woefully behind on our service awards. We didn't do service awards in nineteen or twenty. We had seven people we need to recognize for those. And watch, we'll throw in the twenty one and we don't have anybody in twenty one. As far as I know, we'll double check that, but. So at our next meeting, we're going to do our service awards. We're going to get people caught up with that. It's part of our, our city handbook and our policy for that to happen. We use the League of Municipalities program to do that. So. Monahine and Jan Mycinger are both retired now, but also included them in the proceedings because they had service award milestones during those two years. So we're catching up on that. Sorry, we're behind. Solar policy, we're going to have that for you to look at in the near future too. We adopted one back in the early twenty twenty and I think, well, we inadvertently adopted net metering, which I don't think is what you guys wanted to do at the time. I don't think that was the intention, but we need to kind of work through that. So K P P has given us some draft language to fix that. Right now it's a little wonky with how it's set up. Open positions. So we've added Caleb Spencer to the water and sewer side. He started back in last week of July. He's also on our fire department. Got a lot of, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy. So it's good to have him on board. I've got contingent offers out to a couple of other people. We actually were only going to hire two positions in, in water and sewer, but I, I let them, we looked at the budget, said, okay, I think we can make this work. We're anticipating a retirement next year. And so we're going to hire two because it's been really tough to find people who, who actually work in, in that, in the, in the, you know, in, in the workforce. So we, if we found good ones, we're going to go for it. And we were able to work that in and be flexible with that. And then we're reviewing applications. We've actually got interviews this week with A P Payroll Clerk. So hopefully have somebody shortly on that too. And that will get us up to staff. Which is very exciting. That is all I have today, sir.
You might want to you have had a hire, I think since our last meeting possibly. And I don't know if you care to introduce Mary.
Yeah, Mary. I can grab her.
Yeah, be good.
Let's grab Mary. This is Mary, Mary Johnson. Mary started with us two weeks ago now, right?
Yeah.
Two weeks ago. Yeah. So Mary is doing our front desk clerk position. She's doing really well. And if you want to have anything to say, Mary, I put you on the spot. Sorry.
Don't have invited so far. So looking forward to the adventure that comes.
There you go.
Excellent. So you call into City Hillsborough, Mary's going to be your first line of defense. So. My first.
Exactly. Well, Mary, we're super excited that you joined the team and we look forward to a long, long relationship.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
I would like to just make a, make a comment relative to some observations that I've made and, and I really feel like, you know, you always wonder when you bring new people in, when you've had people, you know, that are doing that job for so many years, you know, how that's going to work out. And I have just couldn't be more pleased with the way these folks are handling the public, the way they're treating people. And it's just extremely customer focused, if you will, and, and very friendly and great attitudes and couldn't be more pleased myself. So. You know, when I'm in and out of here, I probably in and out of here more than the rest of you because I'm always over here signing checks. You know, there was people hunting me down, signed some checks, but I've had the opportunity to observe that. And I just want to make that comment that Danielle and her team have really just done a great job, you know, starting on, you know, a lot of fresh faces, but keeping up that high level of service that we've come to expect. So good, good job. Okay. So we are going to rewind the tape just a bit and we're going to go back up to agenda item E, which is Darren Newfield, this here from E V H Darren. And you're going to be talking to us about the highway project and the sewer agreement.
I apologize because that's where I was at. So it looked like. So I know Zach had been giving you guys updates on how it was going and we had to banish Zach from the county for a little while. He's so good. We had to send him to know the K dot project that was having trouble. So. So you got the B team here finishing the project up. So the highway project, they were finished with the north side completely, but we had some cracked panels we found. So that's what they're doing this afternoon. That's where I was at was getting those, they're tearing those out and actually pouring back tomorrow. So hasn't, it's not going to delay it a whole lot. Then what you'll also see as of yesterday afternoon is we closed southbound industrial back down, going to the hospital. Because long story of it is during design, K dot said, we had, we designed it with bigger radiuses. Kate, I said, no, design it to this standard because this is access management standard for the type of traffic that's there. A mere, what, four to six months ago, the feed mill announces they're going to enlarge and put their entrance off of industrial. So now as after construction has started, K dot says, oh, well now you can make bigger radiuses. And luckily for, for the city, K dot came up with the funds. The change order is roughly about a forty one thousand dollar change order. So five percent of that will be the city cost. So I'm not sure how that'll trickle the city at some point. It depends on how much money is left from your original payments. So, but, but roughly. And so that we closed that intersection back down yesterday. They've got the dirt work, base work done. They're going to try to pour those on Friday. That's the plan right now. So we take beams, we'll break those beams four days after. That's the plan right now. So we take beams, we'll break those beams four days after the beams break. Well, or we, we, we break them at day four, five, see if they break okay, then we can open it to traffic. The plan right now is that sometime mid to late week, next week, the permanent striping guys are in here. And we open it all back up, right up. So talk on wood that that's, it all goes well, but so, um, the, the, the job really has gone well. Um, we haven't had any serious problems. I know there's been, you know, I wish we didn't have to close things down like we did, but I haven't heard super huge rumblings. So. Well, I was going to say, I do want to thank, well, I had that up too. I do want to thank Matt and, and Dan as far as the police go because about midway through the project, we were pouring on the north side and we were having a heck of a time getting people to slow down. And we had flaggers going and we almost had two flaggers get hit. Uh, one semi locked his brakes up because he wasn't paying attention, didn't see the flagger and literally there was black skid marks down the highway. Well, when that happened, the other flagger and I, I was there too. I kind of leaned out to see what was going on and somebody wasn't paying attention from the other way. At the same time, obviously watching the semi skid and literally took the stop sign out of the flagger's hand with their mirror. So we had people bailing everywhere that day. So after that, I got ahold of Matt and uh, for the next two big pours, we had, uh, police cars setting ahead, behind, you know, up probably three or 400 feet in front of the flaggers with the lights on. And that's really all it took. Obviously our amber and white lights flashing don't catch attention anymore. But at least the red and blue still do. So, so.
At least in this part of the country.
At least there, there are some, I, I was out there, you know, just this afternoon. It's a good thing I don't wear a hat out there because either I'd got it knocked off several times today, just from the, there's still a lot of long haul semis that don't adhere to the 50 mile an hour. They're still probably going 80, 85 through there when they're coming through because you, you about get blown into the ditch. So I, I would, this is for the public at large. If you ever don't want to slow down in a construction, again, I invite you to come stand with us for just a couple hours in a construction zone. They'll give you a whole new perspective on why those speed limits are set for the traveling public. So, so, Larry, any questions on the highway job?
Troopers work out there sometimes. I saw a car stopped the other day when I was walking on the trail. So
Who?
The troopers, uh.
State troopers.
I haven't seen them out there at all.
Have you? I saw somebody get stopped the other day.
Oh, maybe they did, maybe outside the zone a little bit.
Well, I know it was, uh, they pulled them over on industrial road.
Oh, on industrial. Okay. So they caught them out on the highway.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. I'm glad that helps too with the word gets out a little bit. So. All right. Uh, the next, the other subject I have is the, uh, uh, engineering contract for the wastewater improvements, embarkment, honey improvements. So the contract that we're presenting, uh, includes a lot of the services we've already completed. So, uh, when you look down through it, and I'm just going to skip right to the pay piece because it's easier to, to show on that. For down in section 2.4.1, there are three subsections there, reduce odor, reduce sludge, and then the barkman honey measurement sampling. The A and B of that are, are the prices of the invoices we've already submitted to you and been paid for. So a little bit of a reverse order, this contract, it got most of that, that it, design sections already been designed services has been complete. We haven't built anything for construction services because we're waiting for materials to come in, which I think are supposed to be in.
Part of them are in, yeah.
Yeah. This, the bulk of them aren't yet, but I thought Richard told me September.
The baffles should be, uh, baffles were going to be scheduled to be installed later this month.
In August.
Oh, yeah, in August.
The aerators, I thought.
The aerators, the, the aerator itself is built, but the floats are not complete yet. They're waiting on some material. So.
So we won't see anything on that part of the bill until obviously stuff gets here and on site and then we start actually doing stuff. And then there's record drawings, the, the as-built drawings, and then the own-in manual that we have to supply, uh, for that obviously come later. I don't think we've come up, there's a section in here that, that is a use as needed. And I don't think we've found the need to use it yet. It deals with, uh, any type of easements or legal surveys or permits that we have to get or do. So that, uh, would only be billed out if it came to the point where we'd need it. And same with the construction services, it's an, it's a on-call as needed type billing. So only when we have to be here, need to be here, will that part of it get billed out. So that's, that's a not to exceed number.
Anything else, Darren?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Are there any questions for, for Darren regarding the, uh, the sewer project? Or the lagoon improvement project, I should say. Hearing none, are we ready to, uh, ask for a motion to, uh, approve the contract for engineering services? For 2021 Hillsborough wastewater improvements and Barkman honey manual improvements? And authorize the mayor to sign? Somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, the contract for engineering services is approved. And, uh, as always Darren, we appreciate, you know, even the B team, you know, coming out to, uh, to finish up these projects. It's a, that's an important project. The, you know, the, uh, the, the hospital trail and that, you know, I think that was Andale Construction's first KDOT contract.
It was.
And it was pretty, at least important to me that we not be too much of a guinea pig for them. And, you know, I think you guys helped them along so that, uh, that didn't really happen. So.
They once, I think the biggest thing for Andale, and they've said this now too, was they realized pretty quick that they needed to get the concrete locally, just from the timing of it. And had we been trying to use their trucks from 40 minutes away on the highway, it would have gotten a lot tougher, especially with this heat.
Right.
So they have done a very good job adjusting to KDOT standards and norms and they've been very good to work with. So.
And I'm sure you've helped them along within that process as well. So appreciate that. Important projects and, uh, you know, hopefully at some point we can, uh, get the industrial, uh, or the Santa Fe entrance, uh, dealt with.
A lot, but we were able to accomplish through the design, the north side, the bypass lane is pretty close to already where we need to be. It's really just the excel, decel lanes on the south side.
Right, right. Yeah.
So, uh, Matt, have you heard from KDOT at all?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, I mean, on the, the other C clip application.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, some places in Kansas have heard, have, I've had some places get a, hey, you got awarded a project and I've had other places get a, hey, you weren't awarded a project. But I, I've got other communities that haven't heard yet either. And KDOT still has not, usually they do it like on a Thursday and then they put it public on a Friday. Some people got notified a week ago and KDOT still hasn't put it on their website. Which they usually do after that. So that's why I just kind of asking if maybe you've heard from them.
Do you have something from? Sorry. Uh, no, we were not selected for that round of funding.
Gotcha. Which was the Sonic.
Sonic.
In that extra pavement at the, at the, at Ash Street.
Right.
Okay.
Looks like I did get that. Sorry.
Not a problem.
Okay. Any other questions for, uh, for Mr. Newfield? Thanks again, Darren. Appreciate you being here.
No problem. Thank you.
Matt, you're, you're completed with your report. So we're on to the council comment section. So Councilman Lowen. No comment? Okay. Councilman McCarty.
I was wondering if we're, Archer Crashford got here. Does somebody look at some of the houses that have a lot of junk in the front yard alongside? And try to get some of that cleaned up. So it looks a little better.
Yep.
So I have.
We've got several open code enforcement cases, but, um, we, we've stepped it up a little bit in that area. We could do a little more. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it looks nice.
Councilman Garing?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. I guess at that point, if there's no other business that needs to come before the council, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.